Good evening and welcome, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. If you would, we'll have a moment of silence. And if you'd stand, we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Here. Rogers. Here. Councilman Randy Bowen.
Here.
Councilwoman Debbie Gump.
Here.
Councilman Herb Curtis.
Here.
City Manager Nate Stansbury.
Present.
City Attorney Brian Bailey. Chief Josh Thomas.
Here.
Chief Jimmy Suttle.
Train.
Street Foreman Tyler Strater. Building Code Zoning Mike Starrett. Sanitary Director Dee Evans. You have the minutes of the work session, the regular session, and two special sessions in your packet. If you want to take a few minutes to look those over. I move to approve the reading of the minutes. For all regular session and special session meetings. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have the visitor's section, and first on the agenda is Betty Brooks. If you don't mind coming to the podium, so we can all hear. I know only get five minutes on Friday.
It's not a hard question.
All right.
I'm counting two minutes.
Now, go. All right. I'm bringing this one video up. I think I sent a couple pictures to Debbie and Kim. I didn't have your all's numbers to send to before the meeting, but I did want to show you this one. This is the one we're concerned about. Can you all see it? Is it running? When it rain? Is that what it does? Well, anyway. See it running? That's going down the alley beside my house when it rains. It's going into our garage. So, if I was talking to Kim earlier or the mayor earlier, and what I was concerned about is them opening up an alley. It hasn't been open since 1960s. We do not want it open, because if it does, all that's going to come down and make it worse. And Skylar's not here this evening, but we had some neighbors that moved in. They've been there for a while, and they got a big truck and a big camper and all this stuff. So, the alley, they had metal posts put in, four on one side, and was it four on the other, three on the other? Well, somebody stole some of them off our side. We don't know why, but they're gone. They keep hitting the signs and stuff. There was a sign erected there that stated that no big trucks can come down the alley, which meant the up truck, the big mail trucks, and the trash trucks, they do a lot of damage to the hillside. And that's raking it all out. I mean, it's just really, in some of those pictures, you can see it's taken outside of the road.
Is this the alley that's closed that the up truck is using?
No, it's not the one that's closed. It's the one that's open. It goes from Walnut Street to Cemetery Street. They, I don't think it has a name. They call it Beast's Alley, but you know, it's right there beside the house. But it's tearing into our bank, which means it's going to cave in onto the road.
Okay.
Right now, it's on the city property, but we do not want responsibility if it falls into the road. Okay? I mean, the big trucks are not supposed to. When the last trash people had at the Browns, they didn't allow them to come down through there. And I think that's maybe what's going to have to happen again, you know? And then Earl Bayless has his at the corner, and he's got the big metal poles and stuff up. And people, you know, it's just really ridiculous for a big vehicle to come down through there. We hear it hit the signs all the time. So, but anyway, so that was two of the things. The other one was, I took pictures of our road on Walnut Street since 1968. 1968 is when I moved up there, okay? Then in 2001, I was in office at the time. That's the last time. That's 21 years ago since that road's been taken care of. The water company's been up, and it has cut big, large gaps, you know, clear down the road to lay the new pipeline. And what's happened is it wasn't filled incorrectly, so it is sinking, and which means it's coming apart. And then when the, when it rains and the water, it's cracking the road. I mean, it's really bad. So, from one end of point A to point B, I feel it needs blacktopped. I don't know how else you're going to correct that, because when that water comes down, did you see any of the pictures? Oh, okay. I'll have to.
I'll forward.
You'll support them. Okay. And anyway, but you can't see it from a vehicle good. You need to get out and walk. And it's not that far from one end of the street to the other. They don't want it. And then coming down Oak Street, those people, it's a vacant lot. I don't know who owns it now. And it has got a post, what is it called? A mailbox. And it's that tall, and it's out in on city property. It's where a sidewalk should be. And when they got the big truck parked over there, you can't get up through there. I mean, you have to back down the hill and go up an alley. That, to me, if it was me, they should move the mailbox back a couple feet. Then we wouldn't have any issues. But I just wanted to bring those. I didn't know if Debbie'd been over there looking at stuff or not, but that's some of the things that I wanted to bring to their attention. Before, when the weather starts getting bad, I know you make a plan.
I haven't been there since the weather, the past, it's been a, probably the beginning of January.
Oh, okay. So, did you see some of the issues?
I did see some of the.
Okay.
Breaking in.
I just wanted to get on the list for some of the stuff to get done before they start planning, okay? I appreciate your time. Is there any questions? I mean.
Nate, did you want to comment?
I mean, I'm kind of flying by blind here, but we can reach out to you and try to meet you on site and look at some of that stuff. You know, the paving thing, I'll just make a general statement. Yeah, everybody's got a street that wants paved, right? And so, we'll try to incorporate that where we can and see if we can come up with some fixes, but.
Now, Oak Street, there were the Southern states at. We've got holes, huge. I took some pictures of those today, too. And they fill them in, but it's with like a cold patch or something. And when they come and plow, it all comes out anyway. I mean, it's the gravel and whatever. So, it probably needs something else. It's just a section probably no bigger than where you're all at, but it's still pretty bad.
Okay.
So, all right.
We've had some holes open up with the winter weather across town, so we'll be working on those shortly.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. And Billy. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Dr. John Williams.
I don't have anything as specific as Betty did. So, I label this a public notice, and I appreciate everyone providing the props that support what I'll be talking about. So, this is for the public, and everyone here is a member of the public. I am, we're all lumped in there. Officials associated with the City of Weston Incorporated described their employment as a governmental service. They were just talking about a service, street paving or something of that nature. So, that's typically how it's described. Since the term government is formally defined and as control of the mind, by what law, agreement, contract, and others, does any person gain control over another's mind? Well, I can give you some examples, but it's, I don't want to take that much time this evening. But that is the definition of government. And if no one's ever pondered that, I would ask you to begin to ponder it at this point in time, because why is it called that? And by the way, if you look up the history of this linguistic issue, you will find that government is a modern term. It dates from what we currently consider in the calendar that's used as the year Z-Evo. So, before that time, there was no such thing. What did they call the rulers of that time? A good question for the public. But the point is, there is no legislation, or statements, or constitution, or anything that says people can control of people's minds. But it's very widespread in our society, if you understand what that means and how that is used. I will point to one example that's in this very room, and that's that flag everyone was pledging allegiance to. I don't know if everyone's aware, but an American flag with a golden boundary, like you see on that flag, that signifies the incorporation act of 1871, in which the original constitution was kicked to the side. It's still there, but it got kicked to the side and ignored. That's why so many unconstitutional things occur in this land at this point in time. And anybody can read any newspaper, look at any website they want, and they're going to see. The question's constantly raised. Is that constitutional? Is that constant? Well, that's part of the mind control. Most people in this country don't know that they've been taken over many times before, and this dates back, the most recent event was 1871. And the place we're standing in, that's called a state, and I see Montani Semper Liberi up there in Latin. Makes you wonder if that's ever existed, but it's, there it is, posted for all to see, and there's that flag posted for all to see. Furthermore, mind control is classified in existing criminal codes as an offense causing harm to people. So, if I attempt to engage in mind control on this person or this person, I could be charged with criminal action. And yet, we have entire institutions whose name is mind control, government. It's astonishing, but it is true. Thus, persons engaged in mind control are prosecutable under both common and statutory law. This is all information for the public to consider, and you can research all you want on this. You'll come to the same place, I guarantee it. So, I can't, I can't find any question about these things. So, my question then is presented tonight. What authority does the City of Weston Incorporated represent? Yeah, I've looked into it, tried to find it out, and it's difficult to find. Right now, according to what I did find, in 2022, the City of Weston is operating as a private corporation. It's registered as a DUNES number, and that's the database of universal numbering system. Another global enterprise, if you would look into that organization and what they're doing, you'll be quite surprised and wonder why are we registered? Why is the City of Weston Incorporated registered in an international global numbering system? It's quite interesting. But they have a number, 039607569, registered in 1913. This was the year after the Federal Reserve Act was thrown through the Congress, and people were conned into accepting it. It was never approved, and there's no law authorizing it. And yet, they're running the whole monetary system now. It's quite astonishing. The city is a private corporation. That's part of the state of West Virginia, as stated on that placard up there. The state is registered as a corporation, DUNES number 828092515. It is part of the USA Incorporated, and that incorporation occurred in 1871. Most people are totally unaware of that fact. You can look it up. It's called the Act of 1871. It's registered. It was never approved in Congress, because Congress was held in suspension at the time, and you may think, find this familiar. Under a state of emergency declared for the first time by an executive, that would be President Lincoln at the time, declared that state of emergency. As far as I know, it's still in effect, because he was assassinated and therefore couldn't rescind the order. The constitutionality of executive orders has been reviewed by the Supreme Court, and basically, they have no constitutional authority, so that's where that stands. Can the code officials or any member of the city council deny that they are operating as a private corporation? I've got the registration numbers right here in front of me, and they're available to anybody that looks them up under the DUNES number. This fact has led other Americans, not me, other Americans, have sued governments before in the United States Incorporated, and it resulted in a Supreme Court decision establishing what is called the Clearfield Doctrine. I'll quote from the Supreme Court's own document. Quote, open quote, "Governments descend to the level of a mere private corporation and take on the characteristics of a mere private citizen," just like we are, "where private corporate commercial paper, Federal Reserve notes, and securities or checks is concerned." More, more, more language, so I'll skip over. "For purposes of suit, such corporations and individuals are regarded as entities entirely separate from government." That's Clearfield Trust Company versus United States in 1942 case. What the Clearfield Doctrine means, and you can read the whole thing if you want to read it all. What it basically means is, when a body posing as a government is using Federal Reserve notes, commercial paper, they're acting as a private corporation by definition of the Supreme Court. That's the Clearfield Doctrine. So, if you go into the Supreme Court on a suitcase, you may run into that. The government loses its sovereignty status and becomes no different than a mere private corporation when they're operating in this manner. The fact that the city and its officials continue to represent themselves as governmental officials, when in fact, they are employees of the private corporation, constitutes prima facie evidence of fraud. They're, either they're unaware or ignorant of the facts, or they are simply misrepresenting themselves to the public. So, with that loss of sovereignty under the Clearfield Doctrine, that, it leaves sovereignty in the hands of the people, the public. As far as I'm concerned, I won't stand under a fraudulent authority such as this, or the state, or the United, the United States government's a fraud, too. And has been since 1871. So, a free person shouldn't stand under such fraudulent activity. As a private corporation, what this means to the average person, so Betty, this applies to you as well. So, any business that you might have with this institution, this organization, would have to be conducted under a contract. So, the US Code, as it's called, the USC Codes, are corporation contracts. And if you look into that code, you'll, you'll come to understand, oh, it's all about business. It's all about money transfers. It's all about things we do have and things we don't have, and who gets what, and this is the American way.
Excuse me, Dr. Williams. I appreciate your time here this evening, but, but you've reached your limit. If you could just quickly summarize, we, we would appreciate it.
Yeah, well, the Constitution, of course, has this free speech thing, and you know, there's no mention of time limits in the Free Speech Amendment. I'll be darned.
No, it's mentioned in the local government.
And of course, private corporations can set their own rules and play by their own games, so go ahead. I will, I will simply respect your right to your own time. So, I'm just informing the public and yourselves about these facts, and I will leave this copy with my references. If anybody else wants to know where to look this stuff up, it's all available, at least at this time, if it's not been censored. So, I would urge you to either contact me if you want to learn more, or to look into it for yourself. And I'll leave this copy with the city council, so that they can make copies and spread it around. And I will point out, do I have an issue? Yes. My one issue falls under this. I had presented this to the Building Appeals Board, Code, the Code Appeals Board. Same information, same discussion, under an issue that Mr. Starrett had brought to my attention months and months and months ago. So, it has nothing to do with that or that specific issue or anything I'm even concerned with. What concerns me is that, in subsequent actions, nobody in the city had looked at any of the references or any of the information that I had presented. Now, I don't know if you're a lawyer or if you study the law, but that's prima facie evidence of what they call abusive authority, ignorance of the law. I mean, there's many, many terms that describe it. So, I would urge you to look into the information I took time to gather for you and brought to you, because it's of importance in the current time and in the time immediately ahead of us, as we're watching this entire country be ripped to shreds internally and externally. You may find yourself in a war, or you may find yourself in other restrictive measures. But it is definitely time that Americans learn what the reality is and why we got to this point, why things are the way they are.
Mr. Williams.
And any hopeful person might have to pave a street in a community that has such low funding levels and such a low priority.
Was he sided with a violation? What, what's going on here? Was you sided with a violation? We don't need a history lesson. Was you sided with a violation?
I'm finished. I'll, I'll wrap up. So.
Yeah.
For your attention. But my point is, I urge you to look into this matter.
We understand. Thank you very much.
I did take notes.
I seriously do. Next, under reports of city boards, commissions, and outside agencies, there is a cemetery board Monday, February 14th at 9:00 a.m. The Historic Landmarks Commission will be meeting Thursday at 5:00 p.m. The Planning Commission will be meeting Wednesday at 4:30 p.m. Parks and Recreation will resume their meetings for the year on Friday, March 18th at 2:00 p.m. And the Lewis County EDAs' next meeting is Wednesday, February 23rd at 5:00 p.m. The Board of Zoning Appeals will be Tuesday, February the 8th at 6:00. Cancelled. Okay.
Board of Zoning.
May I make note of that? Code of Appeals Board, next meeting Thursday, February 17th at 6:00 p.m. And we have listed that the Neighborhood Watch will be meeting Wednesday, March 2nd at 6:00 p.m. at the courthouse. And the, oh, there are minutes in your packet from the LEPC meeting for Lewis and Upshire Counties. And that looks like Board of Directors Agenda Minutes. Is that Chamber of Commerce? Okay. There are vacancies on the Board of Zoning Appeals, two positions. And you have a note to appoint a member of council or the city manager to the Lewis Gilmer Solid Waste Authority.
I do. I think it's time. We've gone almost a year now without a member on that board, and they struggle to have a quorum. And so, if no one on council wants to volunteer their time, I'm putting myself out as tribute to, to be appointed to that board if you all are willing.
Would someone like to make a motion to appoint the city manager as our representative?
I move to appoint our city manager. That's a representative.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to appoint the city manager as our Lewis Gilmer Solid Waste Authority representative. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I'll take the chamber. So, you don't have to rotate.
Sanitary Board Report, Dee.
Good evening. Good evening. The project, we're just still wrapping up. It seems like we've been wrapping up forever. But we are wrapping up the issues we've had with a couple of the landowners on that one. And on Phase 1 of the sludge removal process, we have placed the ads that we needed to place for the blower replacement. And for the sludge removal, the contractors coming in to take out some of this initial sludge that we had all to thank for helping us fund, and County Commission as well. Those ads are going to run two times, and then we'll select a little bidder for that one contract. Phase 2 of the project for the long-term sludge removal, that's also being advertised for engineering services to assist us with that. Region 7 is taking care of the ads and the procurement process for that. Will be assisting us with the interview process with that as well. As far as the plant report goes, Brock's been pretty busy, because Bernie is, as you all know, our right-hand man, and he's off on workers' comp, because he did hurt his back. And he's been out for about three weeks, so we're kind of scrambling a little bit down there, but getting things done nonetheless. And he's also been, Brock has, speaking with some contractors who are interested in the Phase 1 of the job, and also with engineers who are interested in Phase 2. We still have a few more meetings with different engineers this week as well, and I think possibly another one next week. We did a couple new taps. One of them was in Shady Brook on the with River. Another one was in the parking lot behind Wendy's. That was a Holden, Mr. Holden for his barber shop. It's a misutility markouts for them, and we worked with West Virginia American Water Company on a line replacement, because it was very close to our pump station, and we wanted to make sure there wasn't any compromising there. So, we spent the day out there with them. We did get the Weston Manor Pump Station rebuilt with some assistance from Precision Pumps, and we added rails for safety there and added the new lid to that, which was in very bad need of replacement. Vacuum on the vac truck, vacuum pump on the back truck did go out. Adam was able to take care of that for us, so we didn't have to send that out, which saved us a good bit of money there. Other than that, he just did the routine maintenance on pumps and pump stations this month. As far as me in the office, I have been working with the engineers and the contractors that have been coming in, stopping in, asking questions as well. Working with software company on trying to get the email billing for customers up and running. Did all the normal reports, accounts payable, accounts receivable, and trying to help Brock as much as I could and cover in the office for him down there while he's covering for Bernie. If you all have any questions, I'd be glad to answer anything you have. Otherwise, our meeting is next Monday at 4:30. It's open to the public and open to all of you, obviously.
I've got a question.
Sure.
The, you said the back truck, what'd you say happened to the back truck?
The pump on it went out, but Adam was able to repair that in-house, so we didn't have to. Not the jet truck, but the back truck.
Oh, that's what I was thinking.
I seen the look in your eyes whenever I said that, so, yeah, it was the back truck.
And I was just curious, due to the lease, I want the lease covered.
Yeah.
Because I was thinking.
It was just a couple of the, I think he put two new couplers on it, and just kind of revamped it, and it was actually working very well for us this week. We did have a couple major line breaks today, just with the freezing and falling of everything. They were able to Band-Aid those a little bit until we can get Bernie back in here and help us with actual replacement of those lines.
Have you guys cited many of our lines that's running into your systems that you may bring forward to the city for the spring, as far as repairs, or where we have money allotted to get our drainage out of your system?
I think there, I think Brock and Mike, as well as, or Mike, as well as Tyler, have worked on some of those together, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any update on the John Street slip? Have you noticed any more slippery chilnecks? I know that was one of the things.
Unless it changed this week, no, there wasn't any. Unless it changed this week, no, there wasn't any.
So hoping.
I, I mean, I haven't talked to him today, but as of right now, no. But we did make DEP aware when we went to bidding for phase one that we were going to be watching that and there may be a need for using money for that. So they're very aware of that. It's documented. Thank you.
Thank you, Dee.
Thank you.
Okay, next, uh, finance report.
At our special session, you guys were provided with the report. Nothing much is, yeah, and we can thank McKenna for that. I don't know what's going on. Yeah.
Thank you.
Must be the finance touch because I was the one who made the report for the last meeting and I couldn't get it to blow up right. But McKenna was able to provide that for us. And we, we did get a report late today from our accountant said, I'll, I'll check on and make sure there's nothing too, too out of whack. But unless there's any questions, I'll just submit that to you alls for review. Like I said at the last meeting. Our revenues are up about a hundred thousand more than what we projected at this point over the year. And our expenditures are, have been lower than projected. So just to kind of give a review for those in the, in the public, I think that we're, we're in a pretty good, pretty good standpoint here. Our sales tax came in this past month and that was, you know, we project about a hundred fifty thousand dollars a quarter on that. We had about a hundred and sixty some thousand come in. So from all indication, things, things are holding pretty true. We may have a little bit money. You know, we may be able to throw in a street or something like that in the spring paving season. And so we're going to, any extra funds we have, we'll try to do something of that nature. But salt's up right now and hopefully knock on wood, our winter is going to make a turn here in February and be over. But, you know, we spent twenty-five hundred dollars to three thousand over our, our salt budget at this point. So but I think it's been money well spent.
Yeah, sure.
And, and we'll probably buy, start to buy some more equipment here with the budget we have for those kinds of things next year. So if that's it, unless there's any questions, I'm just going to submit it and let it stand it as it is.
Okay, street department report. You have that in your packet?
Do you know if he got it's wrong for Brownie?
She just asked about the alley behind Glenn Brown's house. We, we had a quotation for it because we weren't sure how much to cover. And so we said, let's just look at rocking the whole thing. It was multiple thousands of dollars to, to rock the whole thing. And so we're just waiting for the weather to break to go out there and take a better assessment of it and see if we can try to trim that back a little bit.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions on the street department report?
Oh, I think I have a couple, may have a couple of items on my front porch that may belong to the street department found in the road. I think I have a grease gun. And my neighbor brought some spinner thing and put on my porch yesterday.
I think we were having problems with our salt spinners. There's some kind of bolt that you were having there.
I have the spinner on my porch and I, we do believe.
A grease gun that maybe came with it. All right.
They're found in different locations.
Well, thank you.
I didn't really want to puncture tires. I get out and pick things up.
Appreciate it. Thank you. We'll come get it.
I've got a quick question. Yeah. For the electric lines on the West Second Bridge. The King's Electric, did they complete that project?
All has been done that I'm aware of that was going to be completed. We, we talked about doing additional works there to run conduit from that box down the parking lot to provide to the COVID testing. But I think at this point they're, they're happy with their situation. They've got like a generator and things of that nature. But on the bridge, everything I'm aware of is done and completed. We just paid them. So. They're flipped on. Some of the bulbs were burned out. And so we replaced some of the sides of them and we're working on the, the other side. Yeah.
Did you check with Dave Bush on that?
Not yet.
Not yet. Yeah.
Did you replace the, the green bulb?
Yeah, the green bulb is no longer there.
Okay.
It bugs me. I know it's no longer there.
I know, right?
Okay, we'll move on to police department report.
You were busy. I appreciate you, Josh.
Any questions about that report?
Please convey to the officers that we also appreciate them and all they're doing as well. And, and I really appreciate them in the mornings and hanging up by the old water company site when I'm going to school because it really slows me down through the narrows.
Next is the fire department report.
Jimmy. E and P class along with all the other page staff, but he has nothing to report outside of the, the report that's in the packet.
Okay.
That's Chuck Clem, right? The president of the VFA.
Hey Chuck, uh, when I was cleaning out the supply closet in our department, I found, came across this book. I didn't know if our department would like to have it. It's American Heroes and it's firemen. Would you guys?
Yeah.
Ask him to report on that first meeting.
If, if he would.
While you're here, we had one meeting in regards to the fireworks.
Yes.
Would you care to provide a report to council about our first meeting? It's still planning early.
Basically.
Yeah, just an overview.
What we're wanting to do is just kind of partner with the city, uh, city businesses on Main Street and wherever one wanting to hold some type of street fair. Basically be on water because we would have a parade and then shoot the fireworks off from the city parking lot over on the other side of the river. Uh, so, you know, you have vendors come in, set up, have stuff for kids. We could have our parade, have our flame queen coronation, and then we could set fireworks off. And then it kind of involves the businesses and stuff more so. And then it allows more stuff to take place on Main Street instead of at the athletic field where it's kind of faded away over time. Uh, so we met with Cherry and Debbie. I think the mayor was sick and couldn't make it. And we've kind of started a planning process and Rebecca was there as well to, uh, get this kicked off and try to get something put together for the Fourth of July.
When is your next meeting?
I believe it was the first Tuesday and second Tuesday.
At six.
Next week.
At the fire department, yes.
February eighth. I'm, I'm sorry, March eighth.
Oh, yeah, March.
Basically, the things we're working on right now is trying to time things out for the event. It's just, you know, uh, what time is the parade going to be? What time's fireworks? We know what time they're going to be, ten fifteen. Everything else we're just trying to get organized out and come up with a plan.
Okay. Basically, the street fair, where the thought was to have it on Water Street. And since there, the public tends not to attend a lot of the activities anymore at the athletic field. And of course, there is a cost associated with fireworks. And so as we, you know, the times change, we need to change and roll with it. And, and the street fair would, has, has the potential to raise some money for, towards the firework display.
Yes. And also businesses, over the past few years, the fire department has had to go to businesses for donations for the fireworks. If not, we would not be able to do it. You know, fireworks is anywhere from five to ten thousand dollars a year in costs. And we was not making that kind of money at the field, even if we charged, you know, entrances, fees and all that. So over the past few years, we went to businesses and then, you know, we will continue to go to businesses along with the help of the people in the committee for donations for fireworks and what money we raise this year. If it exceeds the amount that we have allotted, then that'll go towards next year's fireworks.
And it also gives the citizens something to do downtown. And if businesses choose to be open during that time from, you know, between the parade and fireworks time, we can have activities for children. I think that we're involving, we're going to reach out to some civic organizations such as Rotary, the Chamber. And truly be a community effort to provide something for folks to do on Fourth of July. Rebecca? Okay, good.
Yeah, it's great. I would also like to add to provide entertainment as well.
Right.
Music would also be part of the
festivities.
The festivities and the draw to get people downtown.
Question, does the city ever or in the past assist with financing for fireworks?
At one, at one time years ago, uh, they used to provide five thousand dollars, I think it was. And that's when we done ten thousand. They used to pay for half to help offset the cost. And then whenever the city has some financial hardship, they pulled that and we just never did, you know, go back to that.
I guess, I guess I don't understand why we wouldn't assist fire department for the community.
I, I don't necessarily have an issue with it. I think, you know, in the budget, it'll be four days into our new budget. So we can set that in this, the spring priority and make it, make it happen. I don't see an issue with it necessarily.
I apologize to you, city manager. It's kind of a question to you.
That's fine.
Making a general statement, but I think it's something to think about.
But I'd like, last year when I approached the fire chief about it, he was just like, well, this year, you know, we've always done my donations, we'll continue to do that. But it was something I broached him. I said, I think we could probably help out in some capacity, especially with the flame festival. I mean, I think that's, that's something we need to take to the next level as a community. So, I mean, we're, we're all standing by it. Let us know what you need, what you think, think you need. And especially next month or so, that'd be very helpful for us in the budget season.
The main reason I bring it up is because I think a couple of years ago, we almost had to cancel and shut down the whole fireworks.
I remember that.
The donations. And I just think it's a big hindrance in the fire department to counter a lot of donations that they may not get that we should contribute at least to some point.
I disagree.
And the businesses have had a difficult time with COVID for the past couple of years too.
Yeah, I really hated last year going around asking businesses just due to, you know, all the, all the closures and stuff from COVID. So we, we did not raise enough money last year to compensate for it. But the fairs and festivals, what we got from them, the twenty-five hundred dollars ended up offsetting that.
Okay.
We want to work on that.
We're moving it. We're making it a city event as well, as well. So justification there.
Sure. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, building code zoning report.
As you all can see, my mind's in the packet also. I don't want to type much time just reading all this. The only thing I will say that when we had the meeting with the state auditor, I just want you all to know that this was a team, team effort with the state auditor that we had in there. And I'm really proud of everyone that worked on that map and we got that to them. And again, today we reach out to the state auditor on sharing our map with them. And I just, I just want to say thanks to everyone that helped with that. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer on my part. And then you can also see on there that Mr. Andrew Darby has a part in this this month. So if you've got any questions for me, you can ask me and I am assuming if you have any for Andy, he'll answer your questions also.
Quick question. Maybe as far as the structure and the maps and all, is, is any part of that digital? Are we doing that by paper or as far as what I mean by digital is when there's a change in.
Andy, you want to come up?
Yeah, they're not. It wasn't on.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. So what I was asking was as far as when you're structuring these maps, if, if there's any part that's digital or when a vacant structure becomes uh, someone that ends up renting the structure or buying a structure and taking it over or filling the structure. Is there any way of going in to where you can automatically uh, put that into where it's, it would show on a mapping system, digital?
Yeah. Yeah, it's all digital. I mean, it takes a lot of time at the beginning because, you know, we've got a hundred and some uh, properties that we added to the map. But as going forward, as things change, all we can get, we can go in there and you can change it, uh, real quick. I mean, you just gotta go in and, yeah, like you said, it's digital and you just change it and you change it from, if it deteriorates more and we got to tear it down rather than fix it, we can do that. Or if it becomes, like you said, uh, occupied, we can change it from vacant to occupied and click of a button. So.
Incidentally, for the public, um, we met with JB McCusky. And he made the statement that the city of Weston had the most professional presentation that he had seen throughout the state. So I want to commend our, our city of Weston team.
I thought it was the cookies. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. And Debbie brought cookies and he liked the cookies.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you.
And this map that they have created, if, if Mr. McCusky is successful with getting, receiving this funding for dilapidated buildings across and demolition of them across the state, it would create a pool of money. So our cost would decrease. So Weston is ready to submit their proposals now. Thank you.
And also Herb, answer your question, add a little bit more to that. Once we get through this vacant structures and like I said, if we got vacant homes or whatever, then we get those registered and then they come in and take them off. That will be something we can follow also. Okay, yeah. I just, I thought it was a, a system that kind of all intertwined with each other as far as, you know, from, from vacant structures to becoming occupied to advertisements for new business coming in, just so many things would be intertwined with the net system there at some point as we structure it as we go on.
Yeah, these, these guys, they, they made note of whether the utilities were on or off, you know, whether they had a gas service or whether they had electric meter. And so with that, they can flip, I won't say they can push one button, but you know, with five, 10 minutes worth of work, they can color code all the buildings in the city that don't have water service or all the buildings that don't have electric, you know? Yeah. And so, and it just takes time and effort. And as we get into the vacant structural ordinance, we'll be able to create those layers and data sets as well and be able to sort those very quickly and get a count. You know, we open up a essentially Excel spreadsheet and drag and select and we'll give you how many number you've got of this and that. So that's helpful.
Sure.
They've done a good job.
And the other thing I'd like to say on that is our citizen concerns. They're way down people. I mean, you can see this, we only have one in Ward one and one in Ward four. So you two need to work on your concern. Okay. And I'll just follow up with that. Has our building inspector been off? There's only one you said. No, we've had a lot of building permits. I'm still here.
I, I have one question in terms of these structures that hopefully will be coming down soon. Do we have an idea when those are going to be started?
Don't get in the way tomorrow of our construction company because we're starting at right around ten thirty in the morning on South Main. Your ward, Cherry.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Great. Next, we have city attorneys report.
I don't think he included a report in the packet.
Okay. He sent us vital lengthy.
Yeah.
All right. And we have ordinance, we kind of know what he's been doing.
He stayed busy.
Yeah, I would add one thing just very quickly to that. I was reading at home before I came, uh, on this city of Weston onsite citation ordinance.
We've got that as an agenda item.
Oh, was it on there?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that.
Okay, you do have the report in your packet from the city clerk on business licenses issued for the, for January. Quite a few too.
Yes.
And now city managers report.
Back to the business license, just very, very quickly. We have an insurance, State Farm office that's opening up on Garden Plaza. So I assume at some point we'll have a ribbon cutting for that. I'm not sure. I think they've kind of been operating now there, but maybe they haven't gone quite a hundred percent official yet, but we'll keep, just wanted to make mention of that. Still April. Still April.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there is someone during business hours in there, if council wanted to stop in and say hello and welcome and.
The person operating, I think, right now is covering Jenny Gerton's branch and they'll be there for some time while they're remodeled and then they're going to move back out to Jenny's branch and then this will be a separate office.
Thank you, okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
But yeah.
Yeah, I want to say manager's report, sorry.
Yep, reap grant time, thank you.
Yeah, well, we're not completely finished, we've got to get our final report in and I'm waiting some numbers from Mountain State, because you have to give them how many tons of cardboard you diverted and all that stuff as part of your project. So I'll get those numbers and submitted, but our quarterly reports in, so now it's just a file report, you know, send, send the council check and stuff like that, which we did in the fourth report, so it should be.
And the bins are going to be moved tomorrow?
I think the mayor set that up. Okay, so we're moving the bins, are we?
The ninth, right?
Yeah.
Okay, have we put that on social media?
I haven't done anything for it. Do we have a sign that we're going to put at City Hall and say, hey, if you're looking for the bins or at Mountain State Waste?
We don't have that sign yet, but we need one.
All right.
You're called.
Judy, you're going to be outside waving the sign tomorrow. So we'll put something up, I guess, to get those moved.
On social media.
Yep, we'll put that out there as well. You've got my report, one thing I'll just mention, and I don't think there's really an agenda item for it with the Columbia Club on here tonight, so I'll talk about it now. Well, actually, we've got the, the bids coming up there, they're, they're at the last eleven F or whatever is our new business, but we've spent a lot of time on that in this last month and we're, we're starting to make some progress. We've brought the attorney or the, the architect on board, they've been hired in a hourly basis, not to exceed five thousand dollars without coming back to council and getting your guys' approval for further works. But we're just trying to get through this first process of getting the, the building stabilized with the front coming off and the, the, the danger of falling slate addressed before we get into any kind of planning or drawings, the building and things of that nature. So, that's where we're standing, I'll, I'll save the rest up for that, but other than that, you know, I think we're, we're entering this stage, I signed up for the finance, the budget preparatory thing. And if you guys haven't had a chance to do that and wanting to go, I think it's still available to you, I mean, want to go with the girls, I think that's February fifteenth. And the next two or three weeks is really just going to be a lot of budget related tasks, getting, getting those preparations put together for, for our budget season. We do have the, the, the public meeting that we need to get advertised for ARPA discussion and kind of budget presentation and things of that nature. And so that's, I think, February twenty-third, if I remember correctly off the top of my head, and then we've scheduled that for the Masonic Lodge. So, advertising wise, I think the mayor and I need to sit down this week and start talking about how we're going to set the format of that and things of that nature, yeah.
It might be helpful if we have maybe a whiteboard, I'm not sure, or handouts, handout of all of the grants that we have submitted for. So the public can see what monies we have submitted, what's out there, you know?
Citywide or for individual, for a project, okay?
For a pro, everything.
Okay.
Yeah, everything.
Yeah, we need to have a list of that of some sort anyways.
Yeah, we do, and I think the public needs to know that, that, you know, we're utilizing every avenue of money and not leaving any money on the table. But, and they could also see some of the projects too that we have, this is what we've submitted grants for and
Sure.
And the dollar amounts.
Yep, so that's, I mean, unless there's any other questions, I'll just leave the rest so we can get moving here at seven o'clock, well, I'll leave any other questions.
I do, do we have an update on the Mid Avenue slip?
We're reaching out, we've got some contact information for the landowner, you know, everything else is kind of come to the forefront right this last month in regards to all our other projects. But we're at the stage where we're going to reach out to the landowner to try to acquire additional property there next to where the slip is, so we can extend that pull-off area a little bit larger. We just, with the city attorney, I, I want him to be the focus point of that conversation, he just hadn't had the time. So that's where we're at with it and then, you know, regardless of which route we take, we're going to have to get some kind of temporary easements, that's, that's our next step in that. But we're hoping, I think we can realistically look at in May or June to see that constructed.
Thank you.
Yep.
I move that we accept department reports.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second to accept all department reports, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, under old business, the twenty twenty-two dash one ordinance authorizing the sale transfer of city-related to West Virginia Department of Transportation DOH project, this would be the second reading.
And this is for the property for the bridge and Deanville, correct?
Correct.
Between Haleville and Shady Brook.
Right, right.
Is there a motion to have the second reading?
I'll move to have the second reading, the ordinance authorizing the sale transfer of city-related to West Virginia Department of Transportation, Division of Highways Bridge Project, Project, excuse me, State Project Number S three two one N one six slash seven zero dash zero point zero two zero zero.
By title only?
Yeah.
By title only.
Oh boy.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved in second, we'll have voting by roll call. Councilwoman Sherri Rogers?
Aye.
Councilwoman Randy Bowen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Debbie Gump?
Yes.
For the motion.
Okay, motion carries. And now I'll entertain a motion to accept the second reading.
I'll move to accept the second reading.
It's been moved in second to accept the second reading, voting by roll call. Councilwoman Sherri Rogers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randy Bowen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Debbie Gump?
Yes.
Councilwoman Herb Curtis?
Yes.
Next, oh, motion carries, we have the twenty twenty-two dash three ordinance to acquire two forty-one South Main. I'll entertain a motion to have the second reading.
I think Judy needs to read the ordinance by title, did you do that?
Yes, I'm sorry. Twenty twenty-two dash oh one, a twenty twenty-two ordinance authorizing the sale transfer of city property related to a West Virginia Department of Transportation, Department, Division of Highway Bridge Project, State Project Number S three two one N sixteen dash seventy dash zero dot oh two oh oh. By title only, second reading.
Get all that against me now.
Now a motion to accept that.
I'll move to accept.
I'll second.
Go ahead, Randy.
Okay, it's been moved in second and we'll have voting by roll call. Councilwoman Sherri Rogers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randy Bowen?
Yes.
Councilman, Councilwoman Debbie Gump?
Yes.
Sorry Debbie, Councilman Herb Curtis?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. And now I'll entertain a motion to have the second reading on the twenty twenty-two dash three ordinance to acquire two forty-one South Main.
Can I speak to that before we entertain that motion? We've kind of had it on both these properties, a hiccup in the last two days.
Yeah.
And so with two forty-one South Main, we'll stick to that one first, this property is owned by a woman who is in the, in a rest home. And so typically when the last, this is all new to all of us, right, acquiring property and things of that nature. And we're trying to acquire this to, when we tear down the house, it's going to happen this week, we won't place a lien on it, we'll have the property to then redeem or whatever, you know, whatever use we need for it at that point. But as we've tried to go through that process, we've realized two things, one, she's in a nursing home and, and the, you know, when we're trying to sign the deed, the, the person representing her, we're not quite sure the chain of legal custody is there to make sure that that person is the guardian or the power of attorney. So we've got to get that clarified. Then the second thing is that this property is currently in the state, state tax sale process and we missed that due to it being such a recent process and the, and the database hadn't been updated online yet. So, that doesn't preclude us from being able to pursue the teardown of the structure, it just kind of muddies the water as far as acquisition. And I'm putting on my city attorney hat here for a second since he's not here and he's authorized me to give the explanation. I think we can proceed to, to pass the ordinance to acquire the property, but we won't be able to acquire the property until all that stuff is taken care of and it may never happen. And so, we, we're kind of at an impasse in a sense of what, what direction we should go and I think it's kind of up to council to decide what they're willing to do. I don't necessarily see an issue with us holding off and not acquiring the property and tearing it down and, and being ready to place a lien on it. But there is some question there, what would happen, you know, say somebody were to come in and redeem that property off the tax sale and our lien may, may disappear, you know, for lack of a better word. And we'd lose any attempt to, to acquire that money back or whatnot. So, that is a, I probably put it rather inarticulately, but I think that that's kind of the question before us. And there are some questions, like they do owe some property taxes, they're not in the, well, in this case, they are in the rears because they're in the state tax sale process and they also owe us municipal fees. When we acquired the Columbia property, the Columbia Club property, we, we kind of set a, a standing precedent in a sense, right? That if we were to acquire a piece of property, we're willing to waive municipal fees. And I think in this case, we'd probably look to do something similar if we can't convince the owner to, to pay those in advance. Yeah, so that hasn't been, that issue itself hasn't been resolved here either. So, I just wanted you guys to be completely, be completely upfront with you about where this property stands and try to answer any questions or anything like that on the way forward, but before you make that motion to have a second reading.
Thank you.
Is it better for us to have our ducks in a row and proceed with the second reading? Or are you recommending that we?
I think that better for us is kind of a relative term, you know, what are we trying to achieve here? Are we trying to achieve being able to sell the property down the line? Then I think you almost, I'd recommend probably that you pass the ordinance so that we can quickly, once those things resolved, have the deed signed and filed. Now, I, I really question in my mind, will we ever get to that end point where we'll be able to get things clarified enough for us to, to do that?
Sure.
I don't know, you know, so if I were council, I may say, come back to us when that gets a little bit more clear and we'll proceed from there. I don't necessarily see a problem either way and I don't, you know, we're not really missing out on, on a whole lot here, I don't think, but I can't predict the future, that's my problem.
I don't really see a problem with.
Mike wants to stick.
The gentleman that is taking care of this lady's affairs, he assured me that he is, and he does take care of her affairs at Holbrook, okay? So, he was going to bring that paper in to me, but he just never made it there yet.
We have had bad weather.
Yes, we have had bad weather, but again, that's up to you guys, however you all feel that it should be handled. And I appreciate it.
Well, if we go ahead and do it, then staff can go ahead and do what they do to
That's right.
Make it happen.
Do you like to make that motion?
I would.
To have the second reading?
Yes, I'll have the second.
And let me just clarify, we're, we're okay with, if we decide to waive the municipal fees to acquire that property at that point, everybody's
It needs to come down.
Suzie doesn't shoot us.
Suzie, you're okay with it?
Yes, I said as long as we're getting something back.
We are, okay.
We're looking at about two hundred and fifty dollars, I think.
Okay. I would, I move to have the, this is the second reading, correct? Second reading of the ordinance twenty twenty-two oh three, ordinance acquiring property at two forty-one South Main Street, Weston, by title only.
Okay, it's been moved in second to have the second reading, voting by roll call. Councilwoman Sherri Rogers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randy Bowen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Debbie Gump?
Yes.
Councilwoman Herb Curtis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'll move to accept.
Well, we have to, I skipped.
Oh, sorry, you have to read it?
Yes.
Judy, go with it.
Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh three, ordinance acquiring property at two forty-one South Main Street in Weston, West Virginia, second reading by title only.
Thank you.
Now we're ready.
I'll move to accept.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to accept the second reading of the twenty twenty-two dash three ordinance to acquire two forty-one South Main by title only. And we'll have voting by roll call.
Councilwoman Sherri Rogers?
Yes.
Councilman Randy Bowen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Debbie Gump?
Yes.
Councilman Herb Curtis?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. And next on the agenda is the ordinance to acquire two fifty-one South Main, second reading. There are motion to have that second reading.
I move to have the second reading, the ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash five to acquire, or I'm sorry, I'm sorry, let me start over. I move to have the second reading of the two thousand twenty-two dash four ordinance to acquire two fifty-one South Main. By title only.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Voting by roll call. Councilwoman Sherri Rogers?
Yes.
Councilman Randy Bowen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Debbie Gump?
Yes.
Councilwoman Herb Curtis?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, go ahead, city clerk.
Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash four, ordinance acquiring property at two fifty-one South Main Street in Weston, West Virginia, by title only, second reading.
Is there a motion to accept or reject the ordinance?
I move to accept the ordinance twenty twenty-two oh four. To acquire property at two fifty-one South Main.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, we'll have voting by roll call.
Councilwoman Sherri Rogers?
Yes.
Councilman Randy Bowen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Debbie Gump?
Yes.
Councilman Herb Curtis?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next on the agenda is an ordinance to acquire easement for Fourth Street Traffic Control, this would be the first reading. Did you want to speak about that?
Please. You guys don't have anything in front of you for that ordinance because we've yet to receive, I don't think, the full documentation back from Mr. Shriver. That bridge is slated to begin at any moment. They've contacted me in the last couple of days to say, we're ready, where are you guys at? And I said, let me get to this meeting and I'll tell you where I'm at. I think through this whole process, yes, it would be good for us to have, have a road there. Yes, it'd be good for us to have access to the back of our property in a, in a better location. But, and we did work with Mr. Shriver to update the language on the ordinance, I think we tried to run this through here once before, right? And we all realized that there was a miscommunication and that we hadn't included permanent access to, you know, for emergency situations and things of that nature. And that seemed amicable to, to both sides and that's what we're waiting on, final review from their, their side to, to approve that and get that into the packet tonight, which didn't happen. But I think at this point, I've had a couple, well, one, one council person reach out to me and say, is this really what we need to do? And I said, I was under the understanding, this was kind of a priority of council to try to make this traffic control better and in a different place. I just want to clarify and say that I'm fine with us to try to attempt it to, as is on Spring Street, to use that as our diversion if we want to try to save twenty thousand dollars and not go down this road with Mr. Shriver. And I think that that's, it, it would be nice to have an ordinance or to have this read one time and then if, if this doesn't work for some reason, be able to read it a second time and, and go forward, but we don't have that ability, I don't think, tonight. So, to kind of put a bow on all my discussion is I, I kind of want some direction from you all to say, are we fine trying this out with the bridge construction and just utilizing Spring Street? And
Can I interrupt, you also have Menden as well, Menden as well.
Right, and I guess, I don't know which street it is there at the end of Fourth that curves up, but that one little portion there is, you know, twelve, thirteen feet wide and that's where, that's my biggest concern is that at that point, we're going to run into people meeting each other and somebody's going to have a par at the back, back down the hill, which I think is a common occurrence today.
Yeah, I mean, for somebody who has driven that hill since she was sixteen years of age and we have also Miss Bush in the back of the room as well, people know what to do. People know, you know who to back, who backs up, who goes where.
What about one of those traffic signal things, those portable ones, is that an option?
I, I think it is.
What, you check that out?
Yeah.
The price, would we need one or two?
I think two lights would probably do it for us there.
And the cost of that would be what?
Six, seven thousand dollars probably.
Which we would total, or total?
Yeah, that's for the
Which we would have for our street department for other projects.
Yep.
Is, what do you think?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I'm okay with that and I, I just think there's, there needs to be some road, like some Gabian Rock, put in some ditches and kind of expand it out a little bit.
Just give people
Do something, you really need some repair. I had asked, you know, a couple of months I had asked, you know, a couple of months ago for the millings to be put in, and they ended up, as I said, in people's driveways instead of on the side of the road. So I think, you know, with some repairs and rock, because people much rather have their roads repaired that they drive on with the 20,000 plus that we would spend on that easement.
Okay.
Why don't we, Chief, do you have any input here?
No.
On just traffic and.
I agree.
Do you have traffic issues over there and your opinion?
Jimmy's not here. I think there's, there was some concerns right about fire emergency access over there, if there is a fire, how we're going to get somebody in there, but.
Can I refresh, when we did the repairs? On Depot Street, I thought that was emergency access allowed through that area. Am I correct on that?
I think that was the intention, but.
Yeah.
The agreement we had expired after 120 days of signing it, and that was, maybe that's something we can just go back to them and say, hey.
They're, they're very good at working with.
Okay.
The community.
We'll see if we can get that fired back up then.
And I would look at it as well as the bridge is an emergency, it's been an emergency and a safety hazard to the public.
Don't disagree.
It would be nice, as far as negotiations, to gain access to a new road and access to the back of the street department and all that. But the bridge is a priority. It's a safety concern, so if we need to go another route, and what changes everything is that they're ready to go to the state.
Yeah.
So.
No commit, you know, we haven't, don't even have the, the road may not even be ready by the time the bridge is done.
It's a real concern.
Yeah.
So we can't.
I say table it indefinitely at this point. That's my recommendation.
Well, what about the traffic light?
I don't have a quote for you to sort of on the agenda, but that's something I mean, now, I'll look into a little bit further. And I know there was like a four week lead time when I got that quotation, so I, and I placed a call with them on Friday with the Peterson issue to see if I could get that bumped up a little bit, but I'll see if I can get that. Yeah, but.
I move that we table.
I wonder.
The acquirens of the easement for Fourth Street Traffic Control indefinitely.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to table indefinitely. The ordinance to acquire easement for Fourth Street Traffic Control. Any discussion? We will have voting by roll call.
Councilwoman Sherry Rogers.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randy Bowen. Councilwoman Debbie Gump.
Yes.
Councilman Herb Curtis.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next, Department Organizational Restructure.
Okay, you guys, we've talked about this a couple of meetings here in a row. So I guess for the public out there and just for for the sake of it, we're, we're trying to restructure our department heads to cover Tyler Strater has has submitted his resignation as street department foreman, which I won't say he's resigning as foreman, but he he can't take on the added duties that we've kind of added to his plate to run that area. And so with that conversation, he's got some, some private pursuits he wants to pursue after hours, and I, and I'm completely fine with that, and I think he's, he's earned that right to do those things. What we've proposed and what I'm, I think as city manager, I have the authority to to rearrange our organization structure underneath myself, but I just wanted to make clear to everyone what was going on. And I guess there are some salary implications, so I think that that's, with all that being kind of a nebulous, what, what is my authority, what needs to come to council? I think at this point, I'm asking you to do a couple of things. We're gonna. Approve Mike Starett's appointment as street commissioner, which is a vacant position at his current salary of $38,000 and remain exempt employee in in his, his existing schedule. We're going to move, or we're going to bring Andy Darby up as the code official for the city, so he'll be, I'm asking you to appoint him as the code official, zoning officer and flood plan administrator for City of Weston with a salary of $36,000, which is an increase. But he'll be full time and exempt employee there, and that that numbers to meet that exemption threshold by federal law. And then I think, I think for for this issue, that pretty much takes care of what we're going to do. We're going to leave the assistant building inspector position vacant for the time being, see how this goes forward. And we did, I'll just, just make note that we did hire our replacement street department worker who started, started today, Caden Oldacre. And so with with those, with the raise that Darby will, Mr. Darby will obtain and and the rate that Mr. Oldacre, they can't, they canceled each other out essentially compared to our previous street department employee. So that was a net, yeah, net neutral move in a sense, which was one of the reasons we predicated that that hiring decision, so. So I guess all that was to say, I, I, we can list all those details in the minutes. But I'm just asking for feedback, I guess, on that department review and and approval of those, those moves.
So what, Mr. Starett, you said, what was his title want to be?
Street Commissioner. I think that's a vacant position we'd had previously.
Is, is he going to be involved with his old department at all, or?
I think there'll be a, there'll still be an involvement there and kind of a co-working, but Mr. Darby's going to run the department. He, by state building code, we have to have a singular code official in a sense. And so that requires licensing and things of that nature, and he's on his way to doing that, and so we had to fill out that paperwork and such. But as far as current projects, you know, with the, with the buildings we're tearing down, Mike's going to stay involved with that, see those, those through. And then, yeah, I think between the two of them and and just our whole inner workings, how we work, we'll still all work together on a lot of these issues in a sense, but Mr. Darby will be that point person.
Other questions?
Just one second here. We're working on some numbers here real quick. Say it was.
Do you need my calculator? What was the rate for Mr. Oldacre?
1190 per hour.
Mr. Curtis, are you still ciphering? Yes.
So you said 1190 for him and and then?
Thirty-six thousand.
For Mr. Darby.
So the raise that Mr. Darby's getting, what's that amount, what he's making now?
Well, clearly, we've got him on a part time basis, and so his hourly rate's going to be, in a sense, reduced. He's, he's 20, $20 an hour, $20,000 a year is what we'd budgeted, or what we'd agreed to. What we're looking at is, we'd budgeted $32,000 for that assistant building inspector position. So essentially, we're taking, reorganizing our structure, right, and taking Mike as he exists, and he's pulling him out of that budget, and we'll place him in the street department. And then Mr. Darby will, will have to come up with $4,000 in that. Yeah, for his salary, but with our resignation in the street department and Mr. Oldacre's rate, that more than makes up that $4,000 difference. And that's how I was trying to justify it being a net neutral move.
Do you evaluate as far as the street commissioner, his duties, and is he going to have more to take on, Mike, as far as the street commissioner compared to where he's at now, as far as pay goes?
Well, hi, his pay isn't changing, right? I mean, I think it's, that range is a sour or a department head level salary in my mind, and I think that, yeah, there will be more duties there, but he's also, in order for, in order to be an exempt employee, you have to manage so many people. And so that's, that exemption is 36,000 or 35,550 or something like that by federal statute at this point. So his duties will be street commissioner, yeah, he'll, I'll, it's kind of a tough question to answer. Will he have more responsibilities? Within the street department, he will, right? Yeah, you know, but I, I don't know. I think it's from a work perspective, right now, he's juggling three or four different hats in the city building. And so to me, it's a question for him, I think, in a sense, and he's agreed to do it at that rate, and I think we're fine to move forward, right, Mike? Maybe he's having second thoughts now. Thanks, Herb. Sorry, any more questions?
I hear rumblings.
And I'll just elaborate on, on, just for the public's sake, kind of the motivation for all this is that we, we tried having a working foreman running the, the street department. That was, it worked in to a degree, but it was very frustrating for Mr. Strater because he was working and also trying to super, inevitably breaking up the crews where he couldn't be there, and he had to pull himself out of a hole or whatever to go check on another job and very efficient, inefficient, and I commend him for doing his best that he could with it. So it really spoke to the need of having one person that kind of oversee those operations, set up those duties, manage the personalities and things of that nature a little bit better than than somebody who's going to be trying to tie tied into getting work done, things of that nature. And so, you know, from, from my standpoint, when I looked at it as the city manager, you know, could we have advertised the position possibly? But I, I felt that Mr. Starett had the skills really to to run that department, and the skills that we look for in that position. But also, it didn't require us to create a new position in the sense of from a budgetary standpoint. So I thought this was really a win-win situation for all parties. I think, you know, Mike had expressed some interest in doing it, and so that, when the opportunity presented itself, I approached him about it and felt this was the, the best way forward for us as a city to try to, to keep our overhead low and and move forward and and we're still, still see production and see, see things get turned around, so.
And Mike doesn't receive benefits, so I don't see 40,000 being out of line. I'm good with that. He's proven himself.
Good.
It's additional duties, only 2,000.
Yeah, I'm fine.
More year if you rush. I'm good with that.
Would you like to make a motion so he's to?
How do you want that word, it need to accept the reorganizational chart as presented?
Yeah.
Is that how you want it?
Fine, and we'll list those changes salary in the minutes so that you guys have that stuff in front of you, but.
I think we're required to list those in the minutes.
Yeah, and I think that's fine, but I won't make you repeat them all or anything like that.
Yeah, thanks, because they're on my desk.
Okay, is there a second to approve that reorganization? Okay, it's been second. Any discussion? We'll have voting by roll call.
Councilwoman Sherry Rogers.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randy Bowen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Debbie Gump. Yes. Councilman Herb Curtis.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to new business, letter A.
All right. Just kind of tied into that departmental organizational restructure, that mouthful that we just handled, but by charter, we're supposed to have a finance director. We have an operator that that we've kind of operated under the assumption and that the city manager would handle those duties, which. I think it is accomplished, it's worked, but it hasn't worked as well.
But we also had a firm that we paid.
Yeah, and we, and we still do, yeah, we've been using subtle stonaker to kind of fill in for those, those holes of knowledge that I don't have, and they kind of provide a check on me in a, in a sense, right? They're checking our financial reports and generating those and things. But as we've discussed, I think we, we see a need for bringing these duties back in house, and as we stalk, talk through the different, the different times we had, the special meetings we'd had about this topic. I see really two spheres of influence within the finance department, a collector side and of the finance payroll, you know, the, the revenue side and the collection side, I guess, is the best, best way of saying it. But so Ms. Johnston, I've approached her about taking on expanded duties within her role. She's reticent, say, to be very honest about it, and I've assured her that this isn't, we're not hiring her to be our financial expert in a sense, but we do need somebody who's directing the day to day supervision of our, our financial workings. That's something with all the other duties that I'm performing in the state of our operation that I think that I've, I've really been shorted on, and I haven't had an opportunity to really delve into our, our QuickBooks and make sure each day our transactions have been attributed correctly and things of that nature. And also, like with benefits of PIA, it works, I pay our bills, but, you know, I haven't really had a chance to really delve into the numbers and all that stuff and and really give probably, probably what our employees deserve as far as advice and updates and things of that nature. And so those two roles are what I'm, I'm really seeing her sliding into. So at this point, and then I think with that move, we'll, in the future here, we're going to identify a candidate to come in and essentially be the assistant with a little bit, you know, more financial background, more financial experience to handle that other side of the equation for us. And then attempt to pull back the duties from subtle and stonaker that, that are routine, you know, such as accounts payable and things of that nature that they really, you know, what they say, a, a basic level accountant could, could be trained to do very easily. And so that, and in their estimation, that's about 20 or so hours a week. So I, that's the, that's the track I'm trying to put us on and jumpstart us on to. So at this point, I think we need to have a finance director, and I'm recommending you appoint Suzie Johnston, and her salary would be $45,000 a year. And that, I'll ask, make that recommendation, answer any questions you have.
Does Ms. Johnson have acceptable credentials?
Can we see her last two evaluations, please?
Incidentally, how long have you been working for the city in collections and in finance? Six, that's what I thought. Yeah. Thank you.
I move to appoint Suzie Johnston as the finance director at a salary of $45,000 a year.
She'll be an exempt employee, just.
An exempt employee.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any discussion?
I just want to say, I think Suzie does an excellent job, will be excellent disposition.
I agree.
And I'll keep my eye on her.
We'll have voting by roll call.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randy Bowen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Debbie Gump.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, West Fork Conservation, Pope Creek Watershed Dams and Channel. It's the cost share agreement, I believe it's the same amount as last year.
Correct.
Forty-four hundred dollars.
I'll move to approve.
A second.
It's been moved in second to approve in the amount of $4,400. Any discussion? All, voting by roll call.
Councilwoman Sherry Rogers.
Yes.
Councilman Randy Bowen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Debbie Gump.
Yes.
Councilman Herb Curtis.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, the 2022 dash six ordinance, updated vacant structure and vacant property ordinance, first reading. Want to do a preface on?
Yeah, sure. I don't want to cast any doubt on our city attorney's abilities, but, and I'm not doing that, but this is, in a sense, hot off the press. You know, this is something that you all have been given, I think, the weekend, the read, which it's not a long document, so I think that that's reasonable in a sense. But this is something that today we set through this afternoon, and as a staff, I mean, the attorney prepared it, he's given it his review. I've, I've gone through it and made some notes. I don't know if those notes have been incorporated or not at this point, and we've got some, some questions on our side as far as fees and stuff of that nature that we'll point out here in a second. So I want to say, I mean, I know we're all hot to get this issue going and get this settled, but this may be something that you want to take a little bit longer look at, and I think that would be fair to do that. It's up to you all. I mean, I don't know if you said, hey, I was up all weekend reading this thing, and I, I love it, I'm ready to rock and roll, I'm fine moving forward. But I do think, what, one thing that kind of came to the surface in our discussion today was the fee structure.
I wasn't, uh, maybe I missed something. I was okay with the fee structure.
Well.
It should be more.
When you guys had previously enacted this ordinance, I think that the fees were more.
Yeah, they were.
And we, you know, we sat down today and and kind of worked through that old fee structure and said, you know, that's $6,500 for somebody that first year, if they don't, if they're vacant that whole year, and that's strong. And I don't think it's necessarily illegal, but I think that that's, with, with a program that's kind of, in essence, starting from scratch, right? It's something that maybe is not out there very well for folks to know about, or even, you know, you've got three months and then you're paying $500 if I got the numbers right. To me, that's a, I think from, from our standpoint, we're going to have some serious blowback on us from a PR perspective, right? And I think for us to get the program off the ground, these lighter numbers probably make a little bit. And I think for us to get the program off the ground, these lighter numbers probably make a little bit more sense for us from that perspective. But they do, you know, if you look at the, the vacant or the, the ordinance in front of you, we're only charging five hundred dollars for properties that are vacant for, in the first year. And there's no fee to register the, the vacant properties in this from what I recall.
I think there should be a fee to register.
And I don't necessarily disagree. Yeah. And so I think that for, this is policy. This is right up, you know, on the curve of what a city manager does and what council does. This is, this is your wheelhouse to, to write the laws and things of that nature. I'm just trying to give you some feedback and I think, I wish the attorney was here to, to work with you kind of more on a one-on-one basis, but I'm more than willing, you know, if you, like I said, if you spent all weekend looking at it and say, I've got ten comments I want to give you, I'll, I'll take them and, and try to integrate them. But otherwise, I, I said, I think it might, might behoove us to, to look at this a little bit longer.
I got, you have some more.
Sure, for questions on the language, excuse me, on the language. First, starting off under complaints notice, excuse me, the police chief, any police officer, the chief of the fire department and any member of the fire department, the city building code official shall have the authority to identify nuisances and provide a warning to.
The next one.
Sorry.
That's the next one.
We tell them what section or page you're on there, sorry.
Yeah, that is the next ordinance. Yeah, that's, um, the onsite citation ordinance.
Okay.
This one is vacant building ordinance twenty-twenty-two oh six.
Where's that at?
Well, I have like, it is on after the West Fork watershed agreement, the last signature page of the West Fork waters flood treatment, it, it's on the other side. Yeah, um, I would appreciate it if he could make those changes. And also I do believe that we do need the, wasn't it two hundred and fifty dollars for the? Right, for consistency's sake. Yeah. Right. Yeah, it's on the, um.
First year, first year thirty-five hundred dollars.
Six thousand, six thousand.
Thirty-five, six thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not that one.
Okay.
But only other thing we've discussed there today was that.
It's that.
Vacant property?
Where's the fee amounts?
It's letter E, Debbie, that's the one.
Okay.
Can you find the fee amounts in this?
On the registration.
I think we should.
Table this one?
Yeah. I'll move to table.
I'll say.
Till the special session or regular?
At a future meeting, I think at this point, I don't know, is there a way for us to kind of converse back and forth on the, on the ordinance to say, this is what, yeah, can we share drafts with you guys via email? I think that's allowed. And then get us to a point where we're happy with it. It's probably the best way and then we'll.
We should send our input.
We have a motion and a second to table. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Yeah, we're on that next one.
Next, updated onsite citations. Did you have a question, Herb?
Uh, yes, but I'm good and let the city manager wants to speak on this one first.
Okay, just real briefly and I, also I haven't, I haven't even reviewed this one. You did get a second copy of the ordinance. You had one in your packet.
Yeah.
Today, through those discussions, we, we decided to codify, I think was the right word. Our guys, the, to say, we're going to make sure there's a warning process in the citations of other municipalities, when you read their onsite citation, they can basically walk up and say, oh, there's trash, here's a ticket. And, and I think we were fine with that approach, but just from our discussion, we, we would like to use a warning process where we go out there and say, hey, here's a warning, please take care of your, your issue, just to work with people. And then if they haven't done that within the days prescribed, then we'll be back and we'll issue them a citation at that point. So we decided to, to put that into code and that's when you, when you look at that second copy you received today, that language is added and read, okay? And then we also had a question about fines, you know, we had some latitude there. What we decided essentially was to kick, kick this subject to the municipal court, right? Instead of saying, hey, your first offense is going to be a hundred dollars.
Right.
I think, yeah, the crime and, and their reticence and all that stuff, that, that's the judge's role to kind of take that into consideration. Some, the ordinance we used for this is our basis, I think, was Martinsburg. They had every one of these appeals or complaints coming before city council. But we felt the municipal court was probably the proper jurisdiction and the proper setting for those things to kind of be bandied about and negotiated and all that, that manner. So I think it's a, I got to read this, this afternoon, right before I got here and I found one typo. And like I said, I think it's some, I think another review, it was, it had to do with, let me see if I can find the page I had.
That's okay.
It was, uh, the section where we talked about court and one of those vestige councils. So if I could find it there. So I'll get that corrected, but.
I thought it looked good.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a very good ordinance. I just, like I said, I think from our, from our standpoint, we, we've all, we know what kind of situation we've walked into here and we're trying to get things up and running.
Sure.
These, these ordinances I think are very critical. They deserve some deliberation, some thought, you know? I don't necessarily see the need to, to get this done here and there. It's, you know, emergency scenario. I think it's, it's good to give your, you know, to, to bring this before council and say, here's a draft ordinance, let's talk about it a little bit, right? And then, then sit on that for a month and come back and say, are we all happy with it, right? And then pass that and we can deliberate back and forth. I think that's a good precedent for us to self, set for ourselves when we're dealing with these ordinances in the future and, and as we go forward. So that's, that's my two cents on it. You guys can disagree with that, but like I said, I, I would rather take, take the time upfront, make sure we're all comfortable with it and rather than say, oh, shoot, we get into this, we missed something critical and then we're back here doing an amendment to the ordinance a month or two later. Does that make sense?
So you're recommending that we table this one as well?
I'm, I would. That's my preference. If, if, unless you guys feel like you've read enough. I mean, you just got the red lettering today, right?
Yeah.
This, this evening.
And I read it.
Yeah.
And actually, I read the ordinance this weekend. And what I do like about this ordinance is, and we have people online who have, are on the phone who have called in, who, there have been many concerns about some of these nuisances that particularly noise that cannot, it doesn't, the, the after ten PM noise ordinance doesn't really address. But this ordinance does address those nuisances. So someone doesn't have to listen to excessive noise throughout. And when I say excessive noise, it is excessive noise that they should not be subject to. If you can't have a picnic in your backyard or grill out in your backyard because of your neighbors in consideration, I think this ordinance addresses that.
So if the ordinance is read and passed at a first reading, you can still review and, and our city attorney can make additional corrections.
From where I understand it, you can't make changes to the ordinance that would materially change it. What is the definition of materially change? I leave that to council and the attorney to, to go back and forth on that.
I think it needs some work. I'm definitely for table on as far as the language goes. As I stated earlier, under complaints and notice, I've spoke with the, uh, building inspector, code enforcement officer over, earlier before the meeting and the chief of police. Under complaints and notices says, states in the beginning, the police chief and police officer, the chief of the fire department, any member of the fire department and the city building code official shall have the authority to identify nuisances and provide a warning to the alleged violator. Do they also have open range as well? Everyone stated here in this language to, to give an onsite citation as well? And the reason I ask that is because nuisance is a broad term and of course, as you're aware, Mr. City Manager, you got to go to, you know, through train, training and all sorts of things to become a code enforcement officer to cite someone for a nuisance.
Yep.
Or even a warning as far as that goes, because it involves and is included and leads up to a citation, which is given by someone that has to take training classes to, to do onsite citations and, and to cite someone for a nuisance. So that was the first part that I seen that maybe we may be going just a little broad as far as who can generate warnings and, and citations.
Councilman Curtis, would you like to make a motion to table this?
Yeah, I've got one more part.
In regard to some of the fire issues. Yeah, not the nuisance, but the. Okay.
Yeah.
It might be good to send him a copy of that because he'd probably have some input.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I said. I think it's, oh, hey, I don't, I don't want to say that we're rushing it, but we, we're kind of trying to move things forward as quickly as possible, right? So we've got this in front of you tonight to ask these questions.
Sure.
And, and I think that.
Andy might want to weigh in on it.
Curtis has one more point to make.
Sure.
Yeah, my second was, uh, said warning, which is the next sentence, said warning shall give the violator a reasonable amount of time to abate the nuisance. A reasonable, reasonable amount of time to, a broad statement as well. I think there at least should be a window of five to fifteen days, five to twenty days. There needs, there needs to be a means to an end here, a cutoff point. And, and I just think that leaves a wide open window because first of all, you have all these different titles above that's, that you're given authority to cite someone with a warning or, or citation. And then you're saying, given the violator, uh, or shall give the violator a reasonable amount, a reasonable amount of time. Could, you know, when you're having five or six different titles here, it could be five days to four hundred days.
And I hear what you're saying. I don't necessarily disagree. I, yeah, it's a common practice, I guess, in the law, especially in this regard, right? It kind of gives the authority to the, the policeman, I use that term generally, to kind of make that decision, right? They're trying to work with people and things of that nature, right?
Sure.
And you'll get a complaint and say, well, I broke my back and my husband's out of town till the next two months, can I get to this trash pile behind my house in the next two months? And you say, well, yeah, but if you, you know, five to twenty days and you're kind of handicapped by the law. In a sense, you're breaking the law by giving them more. So I think that's, that's the general reason for that broad of language, right? You let people allow them to work with them within reason. But, but that's.
And, and any of these titles, when they're on site with, during an issue could tell some, you know, a landowner, hey, you need to clean this up or this is an issue here. And if you, you know, this is something the city could cite you for at a later time, but as far as tying it in with issuing citations and with the code enforcement department itself, I wasn't sure about that. And then again, a reasonable amount of times, I think should be narrowed down just a little more. And other than that, I think it looks good.
And that typo I was telling you guys about, that was at section seven C at the very end there, there's a before council there. I don't think you want any role in that. I think that's before municipal court. That's that, that language, oh, yeah. It's just something that gets overlooked sometimes.
Ready to make that motion?
Did we table that yet?
We're waiting for a motion to table.
Okay.
I move to table the.
First reading of the.
The first reading of the onsite citation ordinance.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
It's been moved in second to table the first reading of the ordinance on updating onsite citations. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, under letter E, twenty-twenty-two dash eight ordinance, denial and or revocation of licenses and permits. This would be the first reading.
That's twenty-twenty-two oh five or six? Seven?
Eight.
Eight, thank you. Go ahead.
We have discussion.
Sure.
Yes.
That where we are. Okay, the, the whole procedure and the whole situation in regards to code enforcement and cleaning up our town is to clean up our town. So why would you revoke a permit? Because they owe you money. Let them put the money into fixing up their property if they want to. So that, that's a point I'd like to make about that ordinance. If there's something I'm missing, I'll listen.
The motivation for this is that we've created a process. If you can call it that. I mean, it's, it's very informal. We check our BNO taxes, our business license, things of that nature to make sure if somebody's coming in and getting a building permit that they've, if they're a contractor, they've registered to have a business license in the city, that they're up to date on their BNO taxes. And, you know, if you're a property owner, your page of municipal fees, that, that, things of that nature. It's been a very effective process for us. We've been able to, a lot of people have, you know, we're saying, we're, we're, your contractors out there waiting. You haven't paid your business owner, you haven't paid your municipal fees. Let's see, how much do I owe? Five hundred bucks? Okay, I'll pay. And then we've, we've brought in untold thousands by, by doing that. Now, in recent weeks, we've had questions from outside agencies, I'll call them in this discussion at this point, to say, where do you have that on the books that you, you can hold up this building permit because of this? We don't necessarily have any explicit language that says we can do that. There's some general language in there that says, you know, you, all proper fees and things like that should be paid before the, the permit is issued. We wanted to make that a little bit more explicit so that we could hand this off to those folks when that, when that question comes. And to clarify for anybody thinking, and this, this language here came from the city of Charleston, from their BNO tax sec, section that, that, that they gave them the authority to do this. So that's where this comes from. Now, I think the, the point that Councilman Bowen's made is legitimate.
Let me step in real quick and save us some time. I, I was thinking that, um, these restrictions of revocations was being directed at the homeowner or the person at which I don't think that should be, I should have differentiated. I, I understand the point of view of the contractor and the license. I get that, but I understand that.
But we do, and let me clarify it, we do do that to the homeowner as well. If they're doing the work themselves, we're checking to see that their fees have been paid before.
I don't think you should do it to the homeowners or the people who owns the property. If they're wanting to come in and, and fix it up and clean it up and you're sitting there telling them you want, you want their money before they can spend their money. I, I don't think that's a the right way to go about that. I think you should, uh, allow them to improve their property and hope to get your money. It's still your property's improved and ultimately that's your goal.
And let me, let me finish my thought there is that in, in my time here, we've had one issue and this is the issue that we're, that we've all received an email about today. That's the one time we've had that, that situation. That permit wasn't denied. We contacted that homeowner and said, hey, you've got multiple years of municipal fees here that haven't been paid. You know, by our current, current practice, we don't issue these unless that's happened. What's going on here? And that person said, oh, you know, I forgot and whatever, you didn't think, times have been tough. The typical answers, and we said, can we get you on a payment plan? And they came in and we negotiated with them with, with a payment they felt comfortable with. They came in and made that payment. We issued the permit. And so I, you know, I think everybody needs to be treated fairly in the permit process too. And that's an important aspect of this. And we don't want to see anybody, you know, raked over the coals because they're down on their luck or anything of that nature. But I do think you've got to make a good faith effort to, to meet the laws that are on the books for all citizens. And we're just trying to figure out the best way of doing that. And so this, like I said, was mostly directly copied and pasted from Charleston. I'm fine tableing this too and adding some language in there to say, do we want to put a payment, you know, a provision in there that says, you know, and if you can't pay for some reason, you can enter into a payment plan. But I think we all understand that there are people out there with tremendous means who will take advantage of a system like that and, and will get on the payment plan and, you know, use us as a interest-free institution in a sense. So, yeah, and we, and we need a system in place. You gotta, you gotta have a structure to make things work. As you said, it's working. And what's that? Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Yet receives city services. So we're talking about an issue of fairness here, you know?
You're putting a structure and, you know, and a system of.
You're putting a structure and, you know, and a system in place to, to help out on the city side and, in a sense, to help the owner and the homeowner as well. But at some point, the, the city of Weston is going to have to start reaping some of the benefits back from the people. Instead of all the people reaping from the city. That's why we're in the shape we're in. That's why our town looks like it looks now. So I mean, if it works.
You can't very well, you know, have a list in the truck and lift the blade when you go past somebody that doesn't pay their municipal fees. I mean, you know, they're still receiving a discount on their insurance because they're so close to the fire department. They're, they're receiving a lot of services for being in the city limits. The same services that someone that pays their fees.
So is there an appetite to have the first reading of this proposed ordinance? Or to table it this evening or additional language modification?
Can, can the, can the ordinance be amended for the second reading as far as, as long as it's not materially changed? That's what, uh.
The payment plan, I think that would be fine.
Okay.
I think that if we add the payment plan though, we do have some business owners that will take advantage of that. I hate to say that, but it's just going to be a fact, Suzy.
I think there's language you can entertain where you throw it in the lap of the city manager, this finance director to make that determination, right? A reasonable, you know, consideration of your circumstances to ensure that if the city sees works go forward, but also that payments received or some, some kind of language like that. And I think at that point you get, maybe we put a place in there where that can be challenged at municipal fee appeals board or municipal court or something of that nature, but.
Which could be done amended for the second reading.
I've, I'm, I'm fine with it. Okay. I think that the gist of what we're trying to accomplish is still there, right? Where we're requiring the payment of all fees.
Randy, does that language help you in?
Oh, yeah, I'm good. I just got questions sometimes.
Hey, is, is there a motion to have the first reading?
Yep, I moved that we have the first reading of the ordinance, uh, let's see. For denial and or revocation of license and permits. By title only.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved in second. Any discussion? We'll have voting by roll call.
Councilwoman Sherry Rogers.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randy Bowen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Debbie Gump.
Yes.
Yes.
City clerk, please read that.
Twenty twenty-two dash oh eight, an ordinance to require payment of any and all municipal fees, tax or the life before city license and permit shall be issued.
Looking for a motion to accept the second or the first reading by title only.
I moved to accept the first reading by title only of ordinance 2022 oh eight.
A second. Randy seconds.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any discussion? Voting by roll call again.
Councilwoman Sherry Rogers.
Yes.
Councilman Randy Bowen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Debbie Gump.
Yes.
Councilman Herb Curtis.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, Columbia Club front demolition.
Well, initially we had a invoice that we were, or a quotation that we're going to ask you all to approve. It was over $5,000. Friday, I got the call from them and said, hey, we want to reconsider that quotation. We, we've got some real questions there. Um, I said, well, I think Van Ostron Architects who we've solicited and, and brought into the fold to advise us on this stuff. So let's meet with them today on Monday. So through that conversation, I think we, we, we decided a more careful approach was needed in consultation with the contractor. Um, and we'd solicited quotations and these guys were the low quotation. Now it sounds like that price is going to considerably increase because of the, the nature of the works needed. So I don't have a, a quotation in front of you and it may involve, we'll, we'll kind of cross that bridge when we get the quotation and see what the value is, but we may even end up having to advertise this if we can't find a way to, to kind of justify this. This being a, a public safety hazard and things of that nature, I, I think we, we would have the, the right innocence, right? To, to say, here's a couple quotations, let's move forward and, and skip this bidding process. I think that's in the language, but I'll keep you apprised of that, but I don't have any further details at this point. I apologize. It's, it's kind of a moving situation.
Looking for a motion to table.
I've got, excuse me. I had a, a member of my ward, a resident ask me about the, uh, Manchester Bidwell Corporation.
Correct.
You have any information about them or be.
I think that's Mr. Spelsberg, right? I think I got an email from him today about it. What was his, what was his final request? Just refresh my memory. He's wanting then, he wanted to know when they could get in the building and.
To me, he asked me who the best, uh, to arrange a tour, tour of the Columbia Club. And I said, city manager.
I'll work with him on it. I'll get back to him on it. I think it'll be, when we take this front face off, there'll be some access issues for a time being until we can kind of get that restored. So it may be a little bit later towards, towards the middle of summer before it gets in, but we'll try to work something out with them. I don't have an issue with it.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll move the table.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to table the discussion on the Columbia Club front demolition. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The hour is getting late and I appreciate everyone's patience. I'm going to pass the baton to Councilwoman Rogers.
Thank you.
It's getting late.
I'll be very brief. I would like to encourage the public, more of the public to, uh, attend our meetings, our committees, our boards, to become involved. You all are most welcome always, and I hope you feel that at every meeting. I know we do have people now joining us on Zoom and, um, those agendas are posted. And, uh, we did have a constituent who suggested that we move the public comment to the beginning of the meeting, which I think is, is nice, a nice accommodation that, that has been done for constituents. So you can read what's on the agenda and comment before we discuss and before the agenda item comes up. So we are making every effort if there are any other accommodations that we could possibly do to accommodate the public, um, we would certainly entertain those and feel most welcome to, um, to let us know. I do want to also mention the ARPA meeting, February 23rd at six at the Masonic Lodge. Those are community weed meetings. They're rounds to table discussions. The, they, um, we encourage the public to come and sit down and have a conversation about our community. I think that everyone has pretty much been involved. Our city manager has scheduled those meetings. We'll, we'll be publicizing those meetings and definitely would like for everyone to attend and provide their input. And actually I think it'd be a nice time just to sit down and have discussions about our community. And, um, also an opportunity to learn what's going on in our community. So also the last thing I wanted to talk about is the, um, I think once again, I know I always thank the, the city team, but, uh, it just can't be said enough. I can't thank you enough. Think that things are moving in the right direction. I think as a result, maybe the public doesn't know, but we have had some, a couple of neighborhoods actually interested in being annexed into the city of Weston because of our services that are being provided. And, uh, we could not do that without our staff and our city team. Thank you.
I think we've pulled out the same speech bucket.
Really?
I believe, yeah. Yeah, she's, she come from a different realm. I'm talking about community involvement. And I think every person in here needs to question everything that every elected official and every appointed and every entity that's involved in your life, you need to go out and look and, and see what they're doing and what they're presenting and what they're selling us as a good. And what they're doing to our children, our grandchildren. I think we need to become involved when things, things that you've seen happening for many years and, and you see it come crashing down around you. And you see the pain and, and the suffering that it, that creates. And a lot of it's coming from the people who think that there are leaders and think that they're telling us what we need to do. We need to step up and tell them what we think they need to do and, and to get out of our life. And to allow us to, to do things for ourselves because I think if, as we've, uh, been apathetic over the past 30 or 40 years, we've let, we've let this stuff slip away from us and, and it's on a work, I mean, you can't pay attention much to media, I'm sorry. But welcome back. But I mean, but on a big scale, but when, whenever things hit close to home and there's, there's nobody feeding you the story and there's nobody selling you on the storyline and, and it hits and you're looking and you're like, I think that's what's caused these things. So I, I, I'm kind of going around in a about way to try to be diplomatic about it. We really need to question who's in charge of our children. We need to question who's in charge of our cities. We need to question who's in charge of our counties at all times. We've forgotten that we have that right and we haven't done it for 40 or 50 years. And believe me, it's really showing. Thank you.
I echo the sentiments of the previous council members. Uh, community is very important. I think I talked about that last time. I do want to stress that there are some upcoming things that people in the community can support and that is the chocolate festival at the glass museum this weekend. Um, and chocolate should be just a draw of everybody, um, coming in, but that is one PM to three PM at the glass museum and that is a, uh, $10 covers your cost of all the chocolate you can eat. So it's just like a smorgasbord of chocolate. So I've already started working on my chocolate. So that's putting out there. No cookies, but a lot of chocolate. And I also, uh, of course more details be coming, but we do have the community meeting planned for later in the month on February 23rd. So that's at the Masonic Temple, uh, and that's a great opportunity for every community member to get involved and voice their opinions and give us some feedback on what you would like to see. Um, the last thing I would like to, uh, leave on is to encourage anybody that is out there that is having a crisis situation, um, to please seek help. And to, um, realize there are people out there that will listen to you. We are in a community that there are a lot of avenues that you can reach out to. So I just want to encourage you to, to think and, and to talk and to ask and to seek help. Thank you.
You want to announce me or?
Yes, Councilman Curtis, Ward four.
It's, it's really, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
No problem.
It's a disadvantage being on this end because everybody talks about everything. Under the sun and time it gets to me, but I will reiterate as Councilwoman, uh, Gump said that, um, there will be a community meeting at the Masonic Temple on the 23rd of February. And I'd just like to say, as far as, since I've joined the council, um, I've seen over the last couple of years with all the committees, to me, that has been rebirthed with really good people that's put a lot of time and effort into them. People within the community that's helped with writing grants, each department, our new city manager. Uh, we've got a new city attorney on board that has spent countless hours on these ordinances. And so for all the people out there, when you see us sitting up here and, and we're debating back and forth or maybe table and, uh, ordinances or, or ideas that's come about that's on the agenda. Uh, it's just to make, you know, to create more preparation and to, to make sure we have our, all of our ducks in a row. I think you have some pretty, pretty intelligent professional people within the, the city government and on this board as well, as far as a mayor and council that's, that's doing a tremendous job and just making sure to take their time to get all their ducks in a row, uh, to make things better for each one of you in the city as a whole. And with that said, I think I'm finished.
Would you like to make a motion?
I moved to adjourn.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved in second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.